On record.
All right, call to order, the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting, September 12th, 2011, 6:00 P.M. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Egleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quan.
Here.
Stand for the pledge allegiance.
For which is it, one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
This time, before we get started, I'd like to just have a moment of silence, even though it's September 12th, for all those on the 10th anniversary of September 11th, 2001, kind of a remembrance of those lives lost some 10 years ago yesterday, and how our own lives and nation have changed, and how we do things these days. So, moment of silence and remembrance, if we could? And thank you. At this time, comments from citizens present on agenda and on agenda items. Sir? We have those who have signed up, let's see, Michael Shoup is...
I'm Michael Shoup, live at 1249 Northwest 15th Street, the Sea Rest Motel. I'm here to make a comment about our VRDs. I believe, I believe that they're a necessary thing in this city, but they're overcrowding our city. And I also believe that the management companies, they're doing a very poor job. And the reason I say that is because over the last month, I've had issues with them, to where I've actually called them for the first, the first, down there, these little cards they send out, and the ones that I'm talking about is Ocean Shore's Vacation Rentals. I called Jim the first time, there was an issue about a house down at the end of the street, and it took a while, but he come out, they responded it, and they took care of it. But the trouble with it is, is I had more trouble at 2:00 in the morning, 2:20 in the morning. So, I call the first number, and I called a secondary number, and there's always a recording, nobody answers. So, then you have to call the police department. Well, that got straightened up, but a week later, we had somebody else staying in the same place, same people. I talked to this Randy, and Randy said that, he said, "Don't call Jim, you call me, and I'll make sure it gets taken care of." Well, I call, I had trouble during the day, I called Randy, and he was on the road somewhere. He says he'll take care of it as soon as he gets there. Well, when he gets there, well, he didn't get there, it took too long, so I had to call the police department, the police department come out there, and it was, everything was cool. But then, I had to call a second time in the morning, and he said, "Call him," and there was no response from Randy on the phone, which is supposed to be the phone number you call. Well, then, in the morning after I did all this, he calls me, and he says, "Why didn't you call me and leave a message? I could've vacated him that morning, that last night." I says, "Well, it wouldn't have did any good, because then I don't know how long I'm gonna sit and put up that racket up against my wall in my building." So, I says, I, at that time, I said, "I really don't think he care, or you would've answered that phone," you know, it's a responsive phone. Well, he goes, "No, I care." So, the next day, he boots him out, but he waits till about 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. But, he sits there, and he takes those people that partied all night, and he takes them to another location from his company, takes them to a different location so they can terrorize somebody else. My point being is, is what are we doing here? We terrorizing our, we terrorizing our town, and putting a bad name on us because we allow that type of behavior to happen, when they say they care, I don't believe they care if they do that to us. The other thing is, is next street over, there's another place on 16th Street. The way I understand it, I ain't got a card for them, but on the next street, there's a people that's got a speakers outside the building, and they're not supposed to turn them up and down. Well, the last two weeks have been turning them way up, turning them way down, turning them way up, turning them way down. Well, last night, I called the police depart, Saturday night, yeah, Saturday night, I called the police department, and they was being obnoxious outside, on the deck, on the top side, but they'd turn that so far up that I could feel the vibrations in back of my motel. And my point being is, is everybody says they're sorry when it happens, but what's happening is, is they're driving my customers away, and they get money in their pocket, and they're destroying what I have. And I don't know what anybody else feels it, but the motels in this town, I believe that, that they just have just as much right to be able to make the money as well as them do, when they say they have a business, but they don't even have a business license, they don't even have to go through the health department to take and govern their properties, but we have to do more to govern ours, and we're making less because we're being them driven off. I believe it should be balanced out, I believe that we should be taking care of each other, instead of trying to destroy each other. And when Randy took that person to another place, that did it for me. It's, I hate to make it sound like war, but it's not, it's just, it's not right. Across the street from us, on 12, it was, we had a customer in a 1992 place, and it's owned, I mean, it's governed by Ocean Beach Vacation Rentals. He come over to me the next day, and he told me, who, he asked me, "Who is the person on the 1288 next door?" And I looked up the card, and it's the same place, and he says, "Well, that's odd." I called him, I complained about the people next door, yet they said they wasn't managing the place. And I think they was trying to deter from it, because they were throwing balls around, they was hitting up the cars, they was passing up across, up and down the street, you know, when cars come by, they were throwing over the cars, and besides being loud. But, they didn't want to take care of it either. So, all I'm saying is, if they really, really care, they really need to do a lot more to govern their own places like the motels do. We don't let people get away with it, they shouldn't let them get away with it. They need to have a way of protecting everybody, not just them sitting at home, making the money, but everybody. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Warner, Jerry Warner?
My name is Jerry Warner, I live at 1233 Lakewood, and, mayor and council, I'd like to address a couple of issues with you, and one of them being the fact that I'd like to discuss your recent urban renewal project that you have down there on 15th Street. About two months ago, I brought you maps, and also brought you copies tonight to look at what was originally planned for 15th and 16th Street, when Lyle Stewart designed the urban renewal plan for Lincoln City. At the time, I went to his meetings, discussed it with him, and it looked to me like it could be a real jewel for Lincoln City. Well, what's happened today is, is a fact that this thing is nothing more than a public works project. They've gone ahead and improved the street, and if you, anybody, I don't know if any of you councilmen have even driven down there to look at it, but what you find down there is that all of the properties between 15th and 16th Street, that were laid out to be a parking lot and a mall effect on both sides of that street going down to the ocean down there, none of that has happened. All that's happened is the fact that urban renewal is paying for redoing the sewer, the water, and putting into the street at the expense of urban renewal, instead of it coming out of the city budget. That's basically all it is. There is no additional properties to be developed down there, might possibly be one, but what it is, really, when you get right down to it, is just a public works project. When you go down there, I was down there the other day measuring the street, it's 20 feet, face the curb to face the curb in most places down there. And all that is, there was a large utility truck parked there, and the cars had to drive up onto the sidewalk, two wheels on the sidewalk to even get around. That shouldn't even be a two-way street, it should be a one-way street, it's too narrow. And how in God's world, things like that can be designed and go through the city and, and be built that way is unbelievable to me. And the street is fully developed on both sides, so therefore there is no economic development, there's no redevelopment, there is no blighted properties, anything that refers to urban renewal didn't happen. And I challenge any city councilman to show me where that's any real benefit to urban renewal, and paying back the taxpayers for the amount of money, three-quarters of a million dollars are gonna go into that project right there. The underground project on 101, yes, it looks nice, it looks wonderful and everything, it costs millions of dollars to do. There has been absolutely no redevelopment in that project from one end to the other, there has been no blighted properties removed, and we've spent all of that money, it was slated from the beginning to be nothing but an underground project, and that's exactly what it was. Over $40 million will have gone into this urban renewal before it's over, and, believe me, I cannot identify where there's been one private dollar invested in this urban renewal that will go back to the taxpayers. And I think that this city council ought to sit down and take a real hard look about where that money's going. And it really is very difficult to summarize that the four councilmen and two bureaucrats can decide where all of those millions of dollars are spent, because it just takes the majority of the city council. One of the major intersections in Lincoln City, which is West Devils Lake Road, which is Northeast 14th and 101, there are one completely blighted property right there that was within this undergrounding project, three other properties on that intersection that are vacant. And we talk about, $400,000 went into urban renewal this year, there has been no contact with these people to try to come up with a plan. It's totally ridiculous that those millions of dollars were the property that are sitting there vacant, without any effort from anybody to do anything about it. And as a city council, you people have the responsibility to clean this mess up. It's just another pathetic job that has been done in urban renewal. The other thing that, when you start looking at it, you've got roughly $200,000 that you people are paying out in salaries annually in urban renewal, which could be done with one part-time individual. And I have talked to six different cities that have urban renewals as large, or larger than Lincoln Cities, and they do it with their own personnel, they don't have a urban renewal staff as we have here. I guess I'm out of time here, so I guess I'll have to quit, but I had a little more for you, I'll see you for next time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warner. Carolyn Plummer, I'm not quite understanding, you're under G item, but now would be the time to come forward, since there's not comments under the G agenda item, if that's how I'm reading this?
Thank you. I know I'm probably getting the cart before the horse here, but I just wanted to comment on the results of the Rhodes End survey, and I know the findings have not been brought out, that's later in the meeting, but I, when I read the figures, one of the figures says that there are 146 vacation rentals in Rhodes End, and 400 and some absent, you know, properties that are owned by people who live elsewhere. And I just had to kind of blink at that, because that, those figures, I hope Mr. Hawker, when he presents this, will, will give a very detailed description on how he came up with his figures, because in 1989, or, excuse me, 1999, I believe it was, I did an informal survey of Rhodes End, and just to, just to see what the, the composition was of, of ownership out there. And at the time, out of all the properties in Rhodes End, 74%, according to my, my little informal study, were properties that were owned by people who lived elsewhere. 2% roughly were owned by governmental agencies, or other utility companies, or other entities. So, I think it's safe to say, I really do, that most of the 74% of properties owned by out-of-area owners are vacation rentals. And that was, you know, 12 or 13 years ago, and we know that that number has increased. So, the 146, what I'm suspecting, and maybe Mr. Hawker, when the time comes, can clear this up, a lot of people don't realize that with regard to the county room tax, if an individual rents their own home out, they do not have to collect the 9% county room tax. If they engage in rental agents such as myself, we do have to collect and pay the room, room tax. Fair or not, that's up to speculation. Quite a few years ago, I had an attorney tell me, if I ever wanted to fight that, he could win that case in about two minutes, because either something is taxable, or it isn't. But I've always felt that, you know, a lot of the money went toward promotion of the area, and, so I just felt like I didn't want to rock the boat at the time. So, if, if you're relying on room tax figures, I, I don't think that's a quantity...
I'll be happy to deal with that.
Okay. And, but as far as I know, there is no registry of addresses of vacation rentals, because they are under no regulation whatsoever in Rhodes End. So, anyway, that was just my comment, that I think we need to look at that 146 with a very wary eye. Thank you.
Would you mind just giving your name and address for, that's okay?
I'm so sorry.
Nope.
Carolyn Plummer, my company is Pacific Retreats, 3126 Northeast Highway 101, Lincoln City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and pointing this out. That's it on the list. Is anyone else that would like to come up at this time and make a comment? All right, seeing none, we can then move to the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, I'll read the items on that, request to read ordinances first by title only. Minutes of meeting of August 8th, 2011, minutes of meeting, August 22nd, 2011, Oregon Liquor Control Commission, request for change of location, Bymart Corporation, appointment of members for Project Advisory Committee for Walking and Biking Plan, Transportation Growth Management Grant Project, request for approval, water plant chemical feed pump replacement, Oregon Department of Transportation Local Agreement Number 27048, Scenic Byway Program Project, Northeast Port Avenue, Northeast 19th Street to Northeast 21st Street, Bicycle Pedestrian Bridge Approval, and Resolution Number 2011-28, a resolution authorizing and directing budget transfers for the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, in the 2011-2012 fiscal year budget. Any of those councilors wish to remove and hold?
Yes, please, Your Honor, number seven.
Number seven?
That's the one I wanted, I wanted to look at, too.
Okay. Any others?
I'd like to remove number five.
All right. Any other requests? And I move for, take a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus number five and number seven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a consent agenda motion to approve items one through eight, eliminating five and seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Number five is appointment members of Advisory Project Committee for Walking and Biking Plan, Transportation Growth Management Grant Project. Mr. Ellingson, you're on?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that, in, with the 15 people that have been recommended to fill on the advisory committee slots, most of them are from respective groups or organizations, that if, in the future, someone else comes to our attention, we'll have the ability to maybe add to this.
Yeah, I would assume, I guess I have a question, why, if we could, maybe we could ask staff, why this is on here, because it hasn't gone through the process.
Right. And Deb's, Deb's gonna come up and give you more background. In, in all honesty, the reason it's before you, and I'm embarrassed to say this, is, is as an afterthought. If we thought that this needed or should have council approval, we should've come to you first. There's occasions where staff will use a focus group. We have done that in urban renewal on all our planning efforts, for example, okay? And it's not, it doesn't happen very often. So, I guess I view this as a, as a focus group, not needing council approval, but we should've been communicating with you. But, I don't know enough about it to speak more than that. So, Deb, you're on.
Hi. In, in July, I came to the council and presented the project, and asked for approval of the intergovernmental agreement. And at that time, I showed you this list, but I did not ask for official appointment of these people. And we would like to have them covered by our workers' compensation, in case there, somebody might fall on the way to the meeting or something like that. Isn't that correct, Joan? So, you had mentioned that, maybe you don't recall, but you had suggested that to me, and that's why I'm asking this evening that they be officially appointed. And, the county position, we have Jim Beiseman, who's agreed to serve in place of Valerie Solihue, who's left to take a job in Tillamook, so Jim is the county engineer.
I guess the, the question I have is, we've just instituting a new process for committee appointments, which includes interviews, and then background check.
Those are, those are standing committees created by ordinance, that will be long-term and have official duties, as opposed to a temporary ad hoc committee, again, like your renewal planning efforts that we've done with a similar group. Joan?
I was going to say something exactly like that, and also, I think these two trains of work were crossing, or were parallel at the same time. But, I think the intent, when, when we first started talking about the, some kind of check on appointments, was, my understanding was that those were volunteers that were going to be, in essence, in some kind of permanent role, even though that role might have a limited duration, not, you know, somebody who was on a committee for six months or nine months, but...
So, yeah.
I'll have the council to clarify.
So, I guess that, that's the question, I'm looking for clarity, because I recognize that this isn't a, an ongoing committee, and it's a single purpose, you know, short duration, I'm understanding, but I'm trying to figure why then we need to, if council is approving these, shouldn't we be consistent with our committee processes? That's what I'm...
Well, I guess it, we can go back and give you, I mean, you can approve this, certainly have the authority to do that. I think, maybe we need to, it might be helpful to go back and revisit your discussion. Unfortunately, I was absent, at least on the night that, that you approved the, the process that you were going to use. And I'm already hearing, at least from some volunteers, some concerns about that, so, maybe it would be helpful to go back and look at what the purpose of the background check is, and see if we can now focus not on what that check would be, or what the process would be, so much as to what type of volunteer you want to focus on, what category of volunteer.
So, we'll just table?
If it's all carte blanche.
We'll table this issue and this one until later?
Well, the problem is, if it's carte blanche across the board, it's going to slow down, I think you're going to have a slowdown, at least at this point, in this particular committee, I don't know how that would...
All other volunteers that aren't part of committees, and the library has them, there's a lot of departments that Recreation has them, they go through a process, it's, it's just not, they're not appointed by council. And I, I think this could've been that. Okay? I, I don't know that this had to come to council.
So, I, if it's not gonna go through our process that we've just instituted, then I would say we pull it off?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
Because I understand it, it has, in at least my opinion, is certainly short duration and single purpose, and really was more solicited than contributors or committee people versus...
You ask the organizations to appoint someone.
Right. So, a whole different, you know, so I would just assume not see it, I don't know how council feels about it, it's certainly not...
That's fine, and I'm not concerned about the workers' comp. If, if, like any volunteer, if, if staff recruits a volunteer, puts them to work, and reports them to our insurance carrier, they're covered.
You mean if I fall down on my way to the car today?
You're covered.
Okay.
Well, wait, let me, let me, let me...
They're elected, it might be different.
Yeah, I'm just, hey, listen, I don't know if this would make any difference, when I read this, and then the organization, so to speak, that various of these people are coming from, it appears that it's already been determined who would be qualified or be desired to represent these organizations. So, would this be more like a commission, rather than a committee? And would a commission then...
Still requires the same process that, you know, like planning commission, everything else that goes through, is the same process. So, I, it's just best that we pull this and deal with it.
That's fine.
Okay?
That will be...
Thank you. Is that, all right, any objections on this thing?
Not on that one.
Okay. Thank you. All right, number seven was the Oregon Department of Transportation, Chester and Roger, both had this one, you can both jump into it.
Lila, could you help me with this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. This, the feasibility study that was done, Lila, that was, the engineers were retained by City Parks and Rec Department, and... And what was the price tag on that? What did, did that cost us?
No, that was actually the, that was, they were actually retained by ODOT. And what, what they would do with this project is go back out, ODOT would actually go back out within the grant funding, and they would pay for, in the grant, they would pick someone. They have ten, ten groups of these engineering firms, and so they would go out with an RFP, a request for proposal, and pick from, from that group. And I, actually, I really don't know if we paid anything for that feasibility study, but I doubt it. It's, you know, it was the beginning of the, the grant procedure. So I'm not sure if we did or not.
Okay.
I didn't go back that far. It was, the actual, the actual proposal was signed in 'oh nine. So it's been an on, long ongoing project, and this is, you know, down to the, to the end of it. Joan reviewed the, this agreement with ODOT very carefully, took, took actually a couple, couple of months or more to get it where we wanted to be with it legally.
On page two of the feasibility, feasibility study, the authors talk about design exceptions allowing a twelve-foot width instead of a fourteen-foot width. And in their opinion, that design except, exception will be granted. I'd hate to see us have to build a fourteen-foot, I'd like to see a ten-foot wide myself, but that doesn't seem possible according to the, to the, to the study. And I'm not terribly convinced that we can get a twelve-foot, since it's only the opinion of these people that we could get this exception. Do you feel confident that we could get that exception?
I would think that we can get that exception. I mean, you know, we're trying to lessen the tree removal and grading by doing the two-hundred-foot span instead of the, the smaller section. So I would think that we could do that. I think they're going to be, I think they will be flexible with this. And the way the process would work is, you know, once they have someone hired, then we'd be able to come back to the Parks Board. I took this in front of the Parks Board at their last meeting, and they were in favor of moving forward, otherwise, well, you know, this is pretty much the end of our timeline for this grant. It's gone on for quite some time. So it's in the 2010-13 step. And so it would take a year to design it, get through all of the, you know, ODOT processes, all of the city processes as far as council being able to look at it.
And then another eight to twelve months to construct it?
Yes. I imagine it would probably go out to bid January 2013.
Okay.
So there's, there's quite a bit more to it. And it's, for the benefit of the, the public, I should have probably explained exactly what it is. It's, if you'd like me to read some of my memo.
Please do.
I'd be happy to do that. So the City of Lincoln City applied for the National Scenic Byway Grant to help fund construction of a bicycle and pedestrian bridge on Northeast Port Avenue and connect to the already constructed portions of the city's Head to Bay Trail. And those run essentially parallel along 101 north to south. Lincoln City adopted its Parks Master Plan in 2001, and through an in-depth public involvement process, the plan identifies a regional path that parallels along 101, known as the Head to Bay Trail. And the multi-use path will have multiple trailheads along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway that would provide byway travelers, including bicyclists, pedestrians, with access to important recreation areas in the city that are currently fragmented and difficult to access. And so the city has constructed several of those portions of that trail. And based on the preferred pathway alignment, this area is a steep ravine that prevents further pathway development at the northern terminus of Northeast Port Avenue. And for those of you who don't know exactly where I'm talking about, it's south of the community center on Port. And so southeast, or northeast door runs along, and then Port deadends at the edge of this ravine. And so we continue on with that spring-like trail, give you an idea of exactly where it is. And I did attach a map for you as well that we put together. So in 'oh seven, OBEC Consulting Engineers produced the feasibility study that you were talking about for the bridge that would allow this trail to cross safely over the ravine. The study provided two bridge options. They included design standard and preliminary topographical and environmental considerations. The city decided on the longer of the two alternatives to allow for minimal impacts to the creek as well as less clearing and trail work. And so the, the actual application was signed in March 12th of 2009 by the city. And this bridge, bridge section costs eight hundred and seven thousand is the estimated cost of this section. And the scenic byway program would pay eighty percent of that amount, six hundred and forty-five thousand, and the city is responsible for the other twenty percent, one hundred and sixty-two thousand. So, and those match funds would come from the Parks System Development Charge and also our state transportation fund allocation that we receive every year. So that would be the 2012-2013 portion of those funds. And so it was a recommendation from staff and the Parks Board Committee to approve the agreement and proceed with the project.
Thank you. On page three, there's also a paragraph regarding permits, and it looks as though there's going to be a considerable number of permits required in addition to a wetland delineation. And I'm wondering what the cost of that will be and who will be responsible for that and who will conduct and handle all of that.
That would be ODOT. They'll hand, ODOT will handle the consultant, the construction, bidding processes, everything within this project. And so we'd be oversight, council would be able to review, you know, all of those documents along with the Parks Board. And that eight hundred and seven thousand is supposed to be, the engineering is included in that, that figure.
With regard to that figure, Lila, I, on page, I think it's on page four of the, of the study, I, I read it's, the estimated cost is going to be 1.2 million, and then I read again that it's going to be 1.5 million.
If you read in the appendix sections, and that, that was for a further area. This is just, this is just for the bridge section, the eight hundred and seven. So if you go back to.
On page four, there's a chart, total estimated project costs. What bridge alternative, twelve-foot wide, 1.15 K, 1.2 K. As for the prefabricated steel truss bridge.
Well, if you go back into their study a little bit further, they're showing an eight hundred and seven thousand. The total construction cost was eight hundred and seven. So I spent quite a bit of time on this because it was a Parks and Rec project. And according to their bids or their cost estimates, they were supposed to be able to do this section for the eight hundred and seven.
In addition to the, to the conflict in figures that I see, these are two, two thousand and seven costs?
Yes, they did not, well, yes, they are.
Presumably, it's going to be considerably more expensive in 2011?
With, I don't know, with the economy, the way it is, I doubt that it would be more expensive than this.
The, the grant, I think, has the total project cost at 1,757,000. And then the safety federal funds are limited to 645,000. I'm not sure how that's broken down, but the total project cost is more than what you're looking at it.
The, the total project cost for the bridge section is the eight hundred and seven, and we, and they pay six hundred, the agreement, actual agreement says that they will pay up to the 645. And.
And what are the additional costs that jack it up to 1,750,000?
I think that's the total project, which includes.
More than just the bridge.
More than just the bridge.
Yeah, that's more than the bridge. That's shoulders, sidewalks, you know, the connecting areas. And so with, with this part of it, we're just looking at the bridge section, not, not the rest of the project.
What would the entire project cost the city?
It would, well, their estimate is at, at one point, actually, they have, they have a few different estimates here. The twelve, the steel truss, twelve by twenty is, total estimate is 1,148,000. And so, so with this part of it, we're just doing the bridge alone. We're not doing a contract for any more than that. And then the other, the other parts of it would come at a later time. I mean, it attaches to a gravel road right now and then to the other, into the, the trailhead. So there would be, there would be sections that would be left out. So when they did the entire study, they looked at a larger, you know, a larger picture.
This is the single chunk that can't be split up. You can't build a half a bridge. And so this is the only alternative that we ever saw of getting majority of the funding from an outside source for that big component. The rest, and this is true with the Head to Bay Trail in general, it'll come in pieces. It'll come in pieces as funding is available, as other grants are available.
Yeah.
So, so the 162,000 dollars is going to give us a partial project?
Right. It'll give us that bridge, that two-hundred-foot bridge structure is what we will get for that amount of funding.
Okay.
We'll get the, in the, I should have probably attached this part of it, too. This was the application. And in the cost breakdown and the budget for the application, the bridge structure, 2,400 square feet, was eight hundred and seven thousand. And the requested amount was the 645, and our matching funds, and we would match administrative work on this as well, but as far as cash is concerned, it'd be the 162,000 difference.
Right, right. Also in your memo, you, you mentioned that the agreement was signed, I don't know, was it 2009? Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Who signed that?
Mr. Hawker signed that, and I believe Ron Ploger signed that.
And does that obligate us to go forward with this project?
The only thing that would obligate us to go forward with this project is your approval tonight. And at this point, if, if it's not approved, there isn't more time to sit probably and discuss it a lot further. I mean, they're, they're at the end of their, their timeline, as you can see. They're planning, this is the 2010-2013 step.
You can go or no go on the project.
Yes, yes, I realize that. In terms of funding, we have parks, SDCs, and state transportation funds.
Correct.
Can these parks, SDCs be utilized otherwise if we choose not to do this?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Mr. Sprague? Chester covered most of what my concern was. The thing that bothered me was that in the terms of the agreement, it says that the state and agency, we are the agency, the state is the, the other party, agree to design and construct a bicycle and pedestrian bridge over a ravine at the north terminus of Northeast Port and so on and so forth. And that's going to be referred to as the project. Then you go down into the next paragraph, and it says the project will be conducted as part of the senior, a scenic byway program, so on and so forth. The total project cost was estimated at the 1.757 that you mentioned earlier, and that the federal funds available are only 645,000. And everything that I saw in there indicated that there's a heck of a lot more cost than the 645,000, and where in the dickens is that going to come from?
Well, I think that's the, the city's match, but, Lila, maybe you can explain.
Well, the city's match would have to end up being another 645,000. I didn't think we had that.
The, they have, the, the cost breakdown in the budget of the project, they had mobilization, temporary protection, erosion control, they had embankments, all of those things, the aggregate base, and they had walks, landscaping. And so the bridge structure, they just, they pulled the bridge structure out at the eight hundred and seven. And so those other items would not be part of this, this project, as I, as I understand what they have written here.
Well, the bridge will just sit there and.
Well, no, it's.
Someday, we get around to it or what?
It'll, it'll be connected to Port Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
It's a gravel section, and the other, the other end of the trailhead. So it will be, it will be attached to roads, but, so you'll be able to use it.
Oh, okay.
You'll be able to use it. It'll be connected to the road. But it's not, you know, the improvements on the roads on either side are not part of this. This was just the bridge that they were asking for.
Other questions?
One more question, Lila.
Certainly.
On page four, again, weathering steel is not recommended. And what is recommended is paint, coastal, coastal paint. Any idea how long that would last and what it's going to take to maintain repainting and the cost of repainting this bridge?
I think that part of it'll probably come up in the feasibility, you know, in the request for proposal when they get into the design a little bit further. But I would imagine, like any bridge, if you paint it, you're going to be out there probably repainting it, I would imagine, or spray painting it every ten years or so.
Thank you.
Just one other question. I'm, I'm not clear on the match thing we were talking about. If the project is limited to federal funds and then we pay eighty percent of the, of the different, we pay twenty percent.
You pay twenty percent, right.
That, that's all that we're, that we are committed to paying is the twenty percent? Or does this, is this match another 645,000?
No, the, what we're committed to paying is that twenty percent. So as long as this project does come in, you know, like Chester said, there's no guarantee on that, that final number. But we can definitely come up with the 162. So if the, you know, it is risky. That's why I pulled it off the last agenda and talked to the consultants, talked to ODOT. Actually, the person that works for OBEC now was the person that was in charge of the scenic byway project, Kevin Boyle. And so I had a pretty long discussion with him about this. So it does, it does feel a little risky in those numbers, once you sign this. We're, we're committed to it.
I guess the key, the key to me, I think, is going to be what happens if the construction bids come in unaffordable. And I guess that's the question. Can we get out? Can we kill it at that point, pay our share, get out?
Technically, the city's responsible. If the city terminates, it's responsible for any costs to date. So I don't know if that's the feasibility study and any of the cost of the project bidding. On the other hand, I think ODOT would probably be somewhat understanding, for instance, if the bids came in at twenty percent, twenty-five percent over the estimate, they may not be eager to go forward either. So, but the risk, the risk is definitely the city.
The agreement, the agreement that the council's signing does say that we will match whatever that difference is.
Right.
Right, correct.
You know, ODOT's off the hook on that thing when, because based on this agreement, anything that's different than what the, what the agreement says, we, we have to come up with that difference, based on what, the way I read it.
That's, that's the way I read it as well.
Other questions?
I lost something in translation here. So we're going, we're asking, you're asking to do this to twenty percent on the 167? Bid that has, could go way skyrocket up to a million dollars because it was a bid taken out back in.
Well, it was a feasible, it was an estimate of 2,007.
2,007. We don't think prices have gone up or like that since, I don't, dollars. Doesn't sound like a good deal. On the end, how much are we going to end up paying?
I, I guess we need an escape clause.
And we could, we could write something into it.
It'd feel a lot more comfortable if you did. It'd feel a lot more comfortable if you did.
If that's your direction, we'll go back to ODOT and discuss it with them.
We can't.
So what you're saying is that at the time that the feasibility study was done, those costs are now four years out of date. I assume that since the contract is more recent, that there was some discussion about that, but I don't know.
No, they did not update these numbers. But then again, it was, you know, things were higher priced. That was our boom era.
Right.
And so it could easily come in at this estimate.
A lot of this is going to have to do with the design, and that we're not in direct control of that.
I don't know how close-
We will have opinions. We'll be able to, you know, bring it back to council and let you take a look at it, but when you sign this agreement, we are obligating.
How about we try it and get an escape clause?
Maybe we could just remove it from the agenda and come back with more information.
Could we pass along that if we can get a reasonable escape clause for a major overrun, that council would be willing to entertain this?
I'm looking for a somewhat solid estimate on what it's going to cost. I've got three figures, but I-
Well, it's-
I don't think you're going to get that till it's the design.
Yes, you're just not, you know, this feasibility number is as close as we're probably going to get.
Mr. Mayor?
Without designing it.
Yes.
Just so, I don't misunderstand. We have an opportunity based on kind of an arrangement we already made to have a grant. I mean, it's a form of a grant, isn't it?
Yes, it is a grant.
It is a grant.
It is a grant.
And so-
They manage it.
A figure of money which would match that grant was presented to us. And maybe we can't in this meeting, but maybe we should decide if, in fact, the price was to be more or to cost more, how much more we would be willing to pay in order to take advantage of the grant. I mean, otherwise, the grant just goes away.
Well, and we're saying by 2013, you know, we'll have these, we have these funds in place. We're going to use the transportation funds, our STIP funds that we get, SDP funds, from that program, which amounts to around $76,000. And then the Parks SDCs funds would go toward it as well. I mean, it's really, it's a great opportunity to get this portion completed, and we may never be able to do that, you know, without a grant. And that's why they took this part of it forward, and it does connect the trail. It does connect to the roadway and the future trail system.
Yeah, I just want to-
So it's an opportunity that probably isn't going to be here again.
And so for that reason, we want to be careful that we don't dismantle opportunity. I mean, it's a-
I can bring it back to the next meeting with more information and possibly a clause, because it does feel uncomfortable.
It does.
And I'm also going to suggest that it's probably not the first time that a local jurisdiction has been in this particular situation. And I know that if the grant includes the design and engineering and the construction bidding, all of that, if at the end of the day, the grant is awarded, design goes through at the time where, you have two possible times. One is before it's put out to bid, you already know that it's likely to exceed what the original amount was anticipated at, whatever that is, and/or after the bids come in. Well, all of that work is being done by ODOT, but if either one of those two points, the city decides that it can't go forward any further, the extent of your obligation under the agreement now is to reimburse that amount. So I guess the question to ODOT-
Yeah, so that part of it's not quite as-
It's a $645,000 grant. We've expended, you know, $200,000, whatever, on design and construction. We're going to return those funds to you. That's, I think, the question that you're asking, is that the process.
And I think these agreements, especially when you went through, you know, this process with ODOT, they're more flexible than what you read. I mean, they're, they usually work with these agreements fairly well, so.
They have, they have-
I'm sorry, I, you know, I kind of got into-
That's the different ODOT?
Well, they do. You know, we've worked with them on quite a few agreements. And this is their process, you know, every city ends up doing this, so.
But that's my understanding. Do I have that right, Lila, that that would be the likely scenario?
Yes, I believe that would be correct.
So what would be the first expenditure that they would commit to, and that's the design?
Yes, the request for proposal and picking out a consultant, having that design started.
Maybe we can nail that down so that we could, if that design cost, to get to an estimate, to get to a good, solid estimate is reasonable, that would be our risk then, of cutting it off at that point and paying that cost.
Yeah.
And I could get some assurances of that as well, if you want me to pursue that direction. But I really think that we only have maybe another meeting or two before it's over. Their time is, our time is running, has run out, essentially.
Bring it back at the next meeting.
I would be comfortable with an escape clause with a cap, so that we know exactly what our potential loss would be in case we bailed on the thing, but.
I would be comfortable with that too, but ODOT is directing the train on this one. So it'll be a discussion, and we'll do the best we can to let them know what the degree of comfort is that's wanted.
All right. Well, why don't we remove that, then?
Okay, I'll bring it back.
See you next meeting and see what we can go from there. Thank you.
Okay. It is complicated.
Thank you, Lila.
Thank you for the tolerance. All right, we have a special order of business, a presentation, State of Garbage. That sounds exciting. Why don't you come forward? Cameras, you know, PowerPoints, all that good stuff?
Pictures are worth a thousand words, right?
Do a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. If our projector could get turned on?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I'm Tina French from North Lincoln Sanitary, and I'm here to deliver our annual State of the Garbage addresses. I've referred to it tongue-in-cheek for years as that, and I thought, you know what? We may as well start calling it what it is. So first of all, something that's not in the PowerPoint that I wanted to bring up is we turn in an annual rate review report to the city each year, and I'm happy to report that we are not requesting a rate increase for the 2011-2012. So rates will stay the same as they are currently. So I'm happy to say that we are in a good financial position and able to keep our rates the same. This is just an overview of our company. We have 5,200 residential customers, about 500 commercial customers, takes 14 drivers to service them, and there's nine administration and office operations help with that. Numbers, you can see that recycling is actually up from the same time period last year, which is pretty exciting, because tons sent to the landfill is down. So in the past, we've seen recycling go up and disposal go up right along with it. But last year and this year, we've actually seen recycling keep increasing and disposal keep decreasing. Of course, the economy has something to do with that, but it is exciting to see that recycling is increasing, even though we're losing tons sent to the landfill, which is a good thing. The wood and yard debris recovery program that we've operated at the Schooner Creek Transfer Station is down slightly, really slightly, though you can see same time period between January and July of 2010. Our level of participation is, blows my mind. 83% is unheard of, even for non-vacation communities. And that the 17%, I would say is probably 100% vacation rentals that just can't get it right for what, I mean, they're just, they're visiting and they are not paying attention. They just, you know, empty their car, send the kids out with whatever. So most of our vacation rental properties have asked us to pull their recycling containers. But we do have a fair number of people that visit vacation homes that don't have recycling receptacles that come and use the recycling center on 101. So that's encouraging as well. Commercial participation is up over last year, so that's really exciting too. And I attribute that to Gretchen Ammerman, who's our recycling education and coordinator. She does a terrific job, meeting with just about anybody that wants to meet with her. Chester?
Tina, does the casino participate?
Yes. We pick up cardboard from them on a regular schedule, and we pick up some mixed recycling from them. They, honestly, they could do better, but they do participate.
Thank you.
Everybody can do better, is my opinion, so even our office, so. Things that are fairly new that we accept in the recycling center that are not things that go in your roll card at your home or your business. We have bins for all these different things. Probably the newest one is in the lower left-hand corner is paint, and we'll talk about our new paint program. Things that we accept for recycling for a fee are, of course, the wooden yard debris and light bulbs and appliances and propane tanks, inert tires, all that fun and exciting stuff. So our wood waste recovery program, we have been in a partnership with the City of Lincoln City for the last several years. For residents of Lincoln City can come in and get one of those vouchers to take a load of wooden yard debris up to the Schooner Creek Transfer Station at no charge. And that program is very popular and very well-used. And it surprises me all the time, people call up and say, "I just heard that we can do it." And I think we've been doing it for nearly 10 years. Roger was here when we started it. It's when the burn ban went into effect. So maybe somebody knows how long ago that was. It was a while ago. For the rest of the community, the county, it's $6 a cubic yard to drop off wooden yard debris as compared to $14 a cubic yard of its regular garbage. So it's substantial savings. So we collected nearly 2,200 yards of wooden yard debris in 2010, and that is ground and haul to GP and uses hog fuel for their burners to make cardboard. Paint Care-
Do they reimburse you at all?
We actually contract with the hog fuel company, the person that hog fuels it, and he actually has the contract with them. So we pay him, he gets reimbursed, and our contract is negotiated on that, if that makes any sense. So we didn't want to go out and buy a half a million dollar piece of equipment that breaks down every single time you use it. So we contract that end of it. We collect it and haul it. He grinds it and has the contract with GP, and it's a very fluctuating market. And part of the reason why we did that is because there was actually a time where GP was not accepting hog fuel, and this stuff had to be hauled to White City, Oregon, which is south of Medford. So at times, I'm sure he's making really good money on it, and then there's times where he's trucking it to White City, which we weren't interested in doing. Paint Care is a brand-new, well, it's been around for a year now, and I actually just attended a meeting to hear the annual report from the program that's operating this. But in a nutshell, as of January 1st of last year, every time you buy a gallon of paint, you are paying a 75-cent advanced disposal fee. And the way the state wrote this legislation is that that was supposed to, they hired a company called Product Care to run the program for the state. And the idea was that it had to be conveniently located. Well, Paint Care's idea of conveniently located was Metro. And Metro's not conveniently located for Lincoln City. And so we worked really hard for about nine months to get a contract with Paint Care, which they did not want to do. I had support from our county commissioners, and I would have asked for your support, but we were able to get it going. So they now reimburse us, and we mix our own paint and sell our own paint here in Lincoln City. It didn't seem very sustainable for me, for a truck to come down from Metro, pick up the recycled latex paint, haul it back to Metro, and sell it in Metro. That doesn't do anything for the residents of Lincoln City, in my opinion. So we are receiving some funding back from them for accepting, sorting, transporting, and mixing the used paint. But I think it's an excellent program for our customers, and I would really encourage the city, and especially the Public Works Department, to check out our recycled paint for your projects, because it's a more sustainable thing to do. And, you know, why pay $30 a gallon when you can pay $30 for five gallons? So here's our little paint mixing project. We've mixed over 1,000 gallons since December. So we've done two mixes. We did one in December, one in May. We're getting ready to do another one already. So we come up with 13 pretty nice colors, I have to tell you, and we're selling it fairly well. And it's really fun. If anybody ever wants to come out and mix paint, it's a blast. It's messy. Construction and demolition waste, one of the perks of a downed economy is you start looking around and seeing how to keep your guys busy and seeing how to keep your equipment busy, and what do you do with a whole yard full of drop boxes that never used to be there before? And we started being able to store those boxes with construction waste in them, and when we have floor space, we sort them now. So since we started this program, we have pulled out 146 tons of material that has been diverted from the landfill. And we are pretty fortunate with having Cedar Creek quarries in our general area, and they have received certification, an agreement with DEQ to use asphalt shingles in their pavement mix for non-roadbed materials. So public parking lots, private driveways, private roads. So 659 tons of asphalt shingles has been used locally as recycled materials. So that's pretty exciting, and that's a program that keeps, both of these programs are just growing exponentially, so we're pretty excited about that.
Excellent.
Thank you. New savings, it used to be a dollar to drop off those silly light bulbs. And now with all of the, the light has kind of been shed on CFLs, and so the recycle markets are picking up. And we usually see that with new products that come out, that for a while, the markets are hard, and we can't really find anything, and when you do find it, it's really expensive. But at least we're providing something for people that are really passionate about it. But the markets are starting to pick up. It's getting easier to handle them, ship them, and so we've been able to cut that cost in half for customers that want to bring those in. And then all non-refrigerated appliances, we are now able to pick up at no charge. So through some contracts that we have with our scrap metal providers, we have to do less and less preparation of those, and so we are able to pick those up and accept them at both the transfer station and our recycling center at North Lincoln Sanitary for free. This is a program that we started to let people know what we do. It never ceases to amaze me that people don't realize that we pick up junk. And, you know, and I blame ourselves for that, because sometimes you take for granted that you think that everybody knows what you do. And so we took a big white truck and used it as a rolling billboard, and it is more than paid for itself. We've had people literally come running out of their houses and, "Will you take the sofa out of the basement?" "Yes, we'll take the sofa out of the basement. We'll take that." So we are doing more and more of this, and again, this is when you have a workforce, and we really pride ourselves on being full-time, permanent employment that pays a family living wage, and most of our employees have been with us for 15-plus years. The last thing we ever want to do is lay somebody off. And so we have just tried to be creative to keep the guys busy, and this has been a really successful program. Another reason we did this, honestly, is to try to cut down on what we call the mosquito fleets out there of anybody with a pickup going and picking up garbage, which is a violation of our franchise and our city ordinance. So we wanted to make sure that there was no excuse for that behavior to happen. Again, Gretchen has worked really hard and revamped our website. We actually took down our old website because it was awful, and it was not user-friendly. It was not secure, and she's worked really hard, and we actually just launched this Friday morning. So it's a brand-new website. So, it's a brand-new website, it's new. Oh, really? Oh. Here. So, this has pretty much anything you could ever want to know about our, our business. There's a garbage truck. One of the things that is new is our payment options. You can now pay your bill right from our website, and we just wanted to bring our company up to date with Pacific Power and, what is it, Century till now? It's changed so many times, I can't even keep track of it. And so, we, you can now register, it will take you to, I probably won't do it, will it, because we're in a secure location? Oh. So you can actually pay your bill online, and we have contracted with a secure company, so we no longer keep any of that information. We, we used to actually keep that information, and it's not secure. And so, with the new PCI compliance, if you know anything about that, it's a pain in the neck. So this is brand-new, some of you may have received your bill this month and seen that we're asking you to go on and register online. So this is what our customers, you see, we, we bill half of our customers one month and half the other month, depending on the alphabet, so. Mayor Anderson doesn't have service, Gary Ellingson is probably, and Gordon are probably the only two that would have seen it. The next, all the rest of you will see it next month, so.
We pay frequently.
You pay, pay often and pay frequently, that's what we like to hear. So, that, that's our new website. A couple of things that are not on here is, we did our first annual shred event, and Gordon Engelson came to our office and said, "Hey, we were talking about this at council or somewhere, I don't know exactly where you were talking about it." We said, "Great idea." And so, I contacted David Hawker, and we had our first shred event on August 3rd. It was hugely successful, we collected way more than we thought we would collect. We collected 36 roll carts of shredding, which is, Gretchen says it was a half a ton, I thought it was closer to a ton, but anyhow, the, the great news is that, is it was hugely successful. The other great news is that we requested funding, funding from the Lincoln County Solid Waste District that we send a large sum of money to every month, and so, that was, they agreed to fund that event. So, Lincoln City actually got some benefit out of the solid waste district, so that's nice.
Thank you.
We did it a little different, there's a couple of different ways you can do it. You can actually contract with a shredding company to bring those giant trucks down and shred it on-site. We opted not to do that because we were looking at anywhere from a 13 to $1,500 bill, whether they collected one pound of shredding or 1,000 pounds of shredding. And so we thought, "Let's do it." So what we did is, we collected it in the roll carts, we locked them in a secure location, the shredding company came and shredded them on Monday. And that cut a 13 to $1,500 bill down to $300, but it was still covered by the solid waste district. So, I'm not exactly sure which direction we'll go next year, a little bit of it depends on the city's desire and.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If that's the case, could you do it more frequently than once a year?
I'll do it every day if you want me to.
No.
You know, I'm happy to do programs like that as often as you would like to do them, it's really.
We took some of our stuff in, but, you know, if you save it a year, some of that stuff, that's a long time to save.
Sure. Now, just so you know, we, we accept shredding every day at 30 cents a pound, so it's not free. The one thing I would caution you against is, if you provide free programs all the time, people will save it and, and only use it when it's free. So, it, it's a mentality thing of, do you want the people that are using the shredding service to pay for the shredding service, or do you want the ratepayers to pay for a shredding service for everybody all the time?
I just heard the $300, so.
Right, and, and it was very reasonable because of that.
But I don't, I don't want you to, that's fine.
We could do it semi-annually, I, you know, we could do it at tax time. We just, we, we actually did it as soon as we thought we possibly could after, we talked to Mr. Hawker, and we, we found a date that the, the company would be willing to come down on a Monday after, after we collected, and that's why we chose that date. But, I'd be happy to discuss doing it more frequently or a different time of the year, because I, I think it's, obviously, was well-received.
Good, thank you.
I think that's. So, here's some of the other things that we do that don't necessarily have anything to do with garbage. We have our fourth annual haulers' food drive, which is the week of September 19th, very similar to the mail carriers' food drive, where we ask you to set non-perishable foods out with your can on your pickup day, and your driver will collect them, and they will make their way to the Lincoln City food pantry. This year, we're actually going to share proportionately with the Depot Bay Food Pantry as well, so we're excited to do that. We collected 1,200 pounds of food last year. So, we're trying to get to 2,000 tons this year, so we're really trying to advertise it, pounds, not tons. Everything's in tons in my world. So, great time of year to obviously stock up our food pantries, and if you are not comfortable setting it out with your can, please drop it by our office anytime, we will have a bin there, accepting food. The HHW collection event is annual, and it rotates around the county. This year, it was in Walport. Next year, sometime between April and August usually, it will be in Lincoln City, so we'll be planning on that.
HHW is?
Household hazardous waste, thank you. So this is your pesticides and poisons and the little jars of you don't know what it is in your garage. So, obviously, we do Christmas tree recycling at Christmas time, which keeps growing. We hardly see any trees out with the garbage anymore. For nearly 50 years, we've provided free Christmas tree pickup, and it always went in the garbage, but I would say there's probably less than 10% of the customers actually put it out. We still offer that if they don't want to do one of the recycling options, but I would say 90% plus use, choose one of the recycling options. This is probably our, our newest and one of the, the bigger things that we've done, community-centered, and, and we're pretty excited about it. A good friend of mine that owns Wilderness Sanitary in Le Pine, Oregon, got throat cancer about four years ago. And in his travels back and forth to a cancer center, he discovered for himself, as long as, as well as talking to other people in his situation, all of the expenses that are incurred with fighting cancer that are not covered by any sort of medical insurance, gas, food, lodging. And so, he, he started this organization called Can Cancer, and all of the haulers in the central Oregon area signed on to it immediately, and they were able to raise funds that are managed by their local hospital foundation. So, this is Lincoln County, all the Lincoln County haulers have joined in, in on this, and we're bringing it to Lincoln County. And the idea is to raise funds that will be managed by the North Lincoln Hospital Foundation, and up to $250 gifts will be given to people that are fighting cancer in the forms of gas card, lodging vouchers, food vouchers. So we're excited about that. We have a Chamber of Commerce after-hours social at our office on September 22nd, and all the money raised there from the raffle prizes and stuff will go to Can Cancer. You'll be seeing an envelope in your garbage bills in October and November with a Can Cancer envelope. If you're an email customer, you'll be sent a link to the Can Cancer organization, and so, we're pretty excited about that, because there are definitely gaps in society of where people need help. So, that, that's probably our newest thing, and it's, the other thing I think is really neat is all the haulers in the county are really excited about it. Everybody jumped on board, and it's a cooperative effort through the whole county. Our easy pay and paperless billing, obviously, we are pushing that, so we have started a raffle. If you sign up for email billing and automatic bill pay, you get entered into a drawing for a basket, and those are our last two basket winners. So you can see we have 1,600 customers on auto pay, 232 on 100% paperless billing. So those are people that not only get their bill by email, but, but do paperless payment through auto pay as well. So, we're hoping with our new website that is secure that we can encourage more people to do that. That's it.
Well, that's great. Nice update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of council?
I'd just like to thank Tina for not raising the rates this year. That's way cool.
You're welcome. Well, it's, you know, we work really hard to run very safe and efficient operations, and sometimes you have to raise the rates, but we, we didn't have to this year, so.
That's great. The updates are terrific, thank you for.
Thank you. Anytime anybody has any questions, I encourage you to contact me if you have ideas like the shred event, anything else that comes to mind, please don't ever hesitate to call.
Great.
Thank you very much. All right. Change of seats. We've got city manager reports and city attorney discussion.
My first item is a, is a brief report on the survey we did of Rhodes End. Okay. The purpose of the, of the survey, and we got, we got a little bit of pushback on this. A few people contacted us and said that they thought this was just a PR thing. Well, first of all, I'll admit that it was partly a PR thing. We wanted Rhodes End residents to, to know some of the thinking of the city and communicate that with the property owners. We wanted to convey the advantages of annexation, because what we sometimes hear is just "no." And, and we never seemed to get to a discussion of what are the advantages of annexation. Many, many, many people have chosen to annex for precisely those reasons, and so, sometimes that, that's been lost. And so, the letter with the survey that went out, went over some of those reasons. We wanted to learn from the residents and from the property owners what services that, what city services that we have are important to them, partly so that we could plan in advance of an annexation. And it's, certainly, every, every property and every resident gets entitlement upon annexation to our full level of services, but how much do we invest, for example, in the area and streets? What do we do about VRDs, et cetera? So, so these are, they're decision points. Yes, they're entitled to the same level of services, police, et cetera, but there's decisions to be made along the way, and there's budgets to be made. So we wanted to know more about that. Now, when I say "we," I'm talking, not as staff, but I'm talking about as the mayor and council and as staff. This is a blow-up of the survey card that went out. It was a regulation postal service postcard. We bought them from the post office, they were pre-stamped, and so on the other side, we had our address and their, and the postal service stamp. And there's, there's the questions. We wanted them to know which city services were important, and then we asked a couple of questions about, one question about annexation of large undeveloped areas, another about vacation rental dwellings, and whether or not the, the new standards for parking landscaping and multiple ownership would be in effect on annexation or not. And there's some legal questions involved in that, but there's also some policy questions that the city council may wish to deal with. So here's what was mailed out, the numbers of surveys on the left, and the number returned. And you can see that we didn't have a huge response rate, although many people would say that 25% response rate was, was very good. Many, many surveys that go out, mail surveys that go out, get much less than that. To me, it was a disappointment, because I was hoping for 50%, like we had gotten on our resident survey in 2004. So here's the actual numbers from those graphs. Resident property owners, we mailed 120, five came back to us as undeliverable, we had 28 returns, our 24% return rate. Then we had the non-residents who didn't own VRDs. We identified 431 of those, nine came back, 110 were returned to us. What we did for, for the mailing list, we started with the county list of all owners of property in the Rhodes End area. We took out those that were undeveloped, just a single lot. And then we broke the non-residents down into those that we knew were VRDs and those that we didn't know were VRDs. The VRD list came from two places, the county, and I think that was roughly about 100, and then we searched the internet over a period of time for advertisements for VRDs. And there was another roughly 40 or 50 of those that we identified who were renting VRDs, advertising VRDs, but not paying the county. Now, we heard earlier that they only had to pay the county transit room tax if they used a property agent. Now, that's not what I recall their ordinance saying, so I, I need to get that clarified. My recollection of the ordinance, it's been a few months, was that if it was not incidental, then they owed the property tax, whether they rented it or whether a property management company rented it. So I, I need to get that clarified, but at any rate, we identified as many as we could. I'm not saying that out of those 431 non-residents, that some of those aren't rented, but we, we knew there was 146 that, that are rented. And then we sent out to the major undeveloped areas eight. Obviously, there was a number of duplicates, and we pulled out as many of those as we could easily find, because there's really 900 lots in, in Rhodes End, and a lot of them were in multiple ownerships, which we pulled out. So overall, we got about 25% response rate. And I, as I said before, it was a little bit disappointing, because in, in the 2004 survey, which we also mailed to Rhodes End, we got 60% back, but that was just to voters. And voters tend to respond more than the general population does. And we know there was an effort to reduce the response. This is a postcard that we saw that went out. I don't know how broadly distributed it was, from the Rhodes End Group LLC, whoever that is. It says, "Do not fill out the postcard. Look for a letter and postcard from Lincoln City. It is propaganda tool for Lincoln City. It needs no response. We recommend you do not fill out the postcard." I think that's unfortunate, because I think it was a sincere desire to know what, kind of what's important to Rhodes End. And here's, here's what's important. The number one very important thing was that the water and sewer rates are cut in half. The next most important thing was permanent water, protective zoning, street maintenance, police protection, VRD regulation. And still important was the important category, not, not very important, but just important, was street maintenance, police protection. Then there was a number that were neutral, and a number that were somewhat unimportant and, and very unimportant. So this is the same information in a graphical sense, where the dark red is very important, the hatched red is important, so those are above the line, and those that were unimportant, very unimportant are in dark blue, and unimportant in light blue are below the line, below the zero. So you can see, just glancing at that, that the vast majority of, of people that responded to this thought the city services were pretty important, either important or very important. And that included permanent water, police, half the utility bill, street maintenance, protective zoning, and VRD regulation. Then we broke that group, those into, this was all, all the respondents, everybody. Then we broke that down further into the types of respondents. So this is just the resident owners. And here it changed. Police, protective zoning had the most very important, and the next was permanent water. But when you look at. But when you look at police, police was important, not very important, but important. But again, everything's above the line. I mean, the vast majority is above the line, above the zero. This is the non-resident, non-VRD owners. A little different response here. Half the utility bill was most important, protective zoning, permanent water. VRD regulation was down. Obviously, non-resident owners want to have some freedom there. This is just the VRD owners and a completely different response. Now we see a lot below the line. Protective zoning is not important. VRD regulation is not important. Police jumps above. Again, it's a function of being able to rent and have some security. Should any annexation include the large undeveloped areas? There's, I don't know, three or four fairly large undeveloped areas thereby granting development rights. And the majority across the board said no. So again, when and if we start talking seriously about annexation, we ought to keep in mind what area we want to annex and should it or should it not include those areas. Again, I wish more of the people of Rhodes End would have weighed in on this. It's an important question. Here's another important question that council may choose to deal with. Should existing vacation rentals that do not meet the city's parking, landscaping, and multiple ownership restrictions be allowed to continue? The reason that question was asked, aside from the legalities of what zoning is really in place, when annexation occurs, if it occurs, is when those three things were imposed on VRDs within the city, those in existence at that time were exempted from those particular three regulations, not all the rest of the regulations. All the rest of the regulations on noise and trash and fees and everything else applied. But those three did not apply retroactively. And so the question was, would that be the same case in Rhodes End? And Rhodes End VRD owners are asking staff that question, and we don't frankly know. So out of that, residents said 85% said no, non-residents 60% said no, VRD owners 84% said yes. Overall, 56% said no, 44% said yes. Now, to me, here's the bottom line of the city services. If we just look at important and unimportant, it's obvious to me that the city services that we offer, that we've listed, are important across the board to Rhodes End property owners, more so some than others, and more so some groups than other groups. But city services are important. The issue seems to be jumping out here is bucks, dollars. The half the utility bill is a big issue, which means that property taxes are also a big issue. I mean, if money on, money's fungible. It's the same kind of money. So if you save half on your utility bill, that's the same money that you would be paying in property taxes.
Mr. Hawker, before you leave that one, what's the difference between those two groups?
One's just, well, one's percentages and one is just sheer numbers.
Okay, okay.
So it's probably easier to look at the percentages at the bottom. Let me run through them in case the audience in TV land can't read them. Permanent water was important in one way or the other, either very important or important to 81%, unimportant to 19%. Police protection was important to 73, unimportant to 27. Half the utility bill was important to 81% of those that responded, 19% said it wasn't. Street maintenance was important to 80% of those that responded, 20% no. Protective zoning, 73% said it was important or very important, 27% said no. VRD regulation, here's a closer one, 59% said it was important, 41% not. So the vast majority, except for VRD regulation, the vast majority of things that we listed there are either important or very important. I think that says a lot we need to keep in mind. Questions?
Very good. Helpful to take a look at that.
And I do have an updated memo on that. It should have been in the packet. And again, I had a couple of days off and fished that somehow, but I'll send you a copy of it, and it's available to anybody. It's very much the same as the memo that was in the packet with the few new responses And I had a couple more very brief items. For the last few years, we've been budgeting and paying for $5,000 per year towards education in the form of a subsidy for Taft High School to offer an elective. We've been joined in recent years by the Confederate tribes of the Slets Indians and by the Samaritan Hospital, each kicking in $5,000. It's in the budget, it's within my purchasing authority, but it's outside our normal service delivery, and therefore, I'm going to ask council, if you wish to pledge that $5,000. My understanding is that the hospital and the tribe have already agreed to do so. The only conditions that we put on that, excuse me, please, is that it be an additional elective that they otherwise couldn't offer and not replace something, and that it be an elective and it not be in their core. So that would, if you approve it, that would be in the form of a letter granting the $5,000. So at this point, I'd ask you to discuss that and consider if you'd like to do that. And if so, I'll make the commitment.
And I can confirm, I've talked to both the hospital and the tribe, and both are eager to participate. And I indicated to them that we would be looking at it tonight, so they're in. And Mr. Hawker's correct, standing has been an elective rather than a core product. Typically, it's been music, a type of music. Again, my understanding and the history with that is it translates to math skills. The actual music ability is a way of reinforcing math skills.
It also, when we originally came up with this program, it's related to the dropout rate. If there are electives that interest students, they keep more students enrolled. It becomes an incentive. It's the icing on their cake. And sometimes that cake is pretty tough for them to take, but this icing sometimes makes it go down a little bit easier.
So any questions from council? Would consensus be fine?
Oh, yeah, certainly.
Gary and Chester, any questions, though?
My vote is yes.
Okay. So consensus?
You mean the majority? You want us to say out loud?
Oh, no, no. I'm just looking for nodding heads. If anybody has, that'd be fine. So you clearly have consensus, yeah?
I'll make the commitment.
Thank you.
And the only other item I had is I'm going to have a week's vacation sometime in September and a couple of days off in October. And I will, at least in September, be out of touch some of the time. And for that reason, I would ask council to appoint a city manager pro tem. I can't do that, only council can do that. And they assume all the powers of the city manager with the exception of being able to terminate an employee. I would ask that Chief Bichard be appointed as the primary and Lila Bradley, Public Works Director, as the secondary, meaning if Chief Bichard was absent, she would step in. Those are the same two positions that by council resolution automatically step in if I'm gone in the case of an emergency. So that would make, in case of an emergency, no need for a second change. So that would actually need a council motion to make those appointment, to make that appointment.
And the motion be to, do we need to name specific dates or in your absence?
In any absence in September or in October, that Chief Stephen Bichard would be appointed city manager pro tem with, in his absence, with Lila Bradley, Public Works Director, secondary.
Motion?
Does that work, Joan?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion to, as stated. Do you want to tackle?
A motion for during the months of September and October in the city manager's absence, that Chief Stephen Bichard will be the city manager pro tem and Lila Bradley will be the secondary.
I just mentioned that I can't give you exact dates. One of those, one of those, a couple of days in October, I'm going to visit my father, who's getting very old and he's out of state, and I need to nail down a date on that. It'll be sometime in October.
Sounds good.
About a couple of days.
Good. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor. That's all I had for this evening. Thanks.
That's great. Mr. Norikis?
Mr. Hawker, regarding the Schooner Creek project, that's started?
Yes. They have been excavating our, that was actually on my list here, and I forgot to do it. Our water transmission main, the bypass, the temporary bypass on Schooner Creek is out of service. My understanding is that it's been secured to the hillside, empty. It couldn't be done full. It's out, it's totally out of service. The line is severed. The excavation has begun, and my understanding is they're excavating pretty rapidly. And I think they may have worked Saturday, so I didn't see what they accomplished. But we're looking at a month here where the only source of water for our entire service area is the new Drift Creek water main that council agreed to fund, where we didn't have a budget. And now it looks like without that, we would be in pretty serious trouble, because we would have to find a way to secure that bypass to that hill in a secure way and be hanging on that thread, which would be a lot of sleepless nights. So right now, we're keeping up with the demand. We obviously had a good weekend of tourists, of visitors, and we kept up with the demand. And barring a failure in the delivery system somewhere along the line, we shouldn't have any problems. If, and part of that new main feeds an old line on US 101 near Schooner Creek Bridge and south to Cutler City. And it is an old line, an old asbestos cement line. We bought extra parts for it. Our crews are very familiar with it. If it would break, we'd assess how long it would take to repair. And if it looked like we were going to face any danger at all, we would, we would term, we would ask people to terminate outside irrigation. I don't expect that to happen, but it is a contingency that one year out of 100 maybe could, or one year out of 50. So I'm not going to say it won't. We don't think it will. I don't, I'm not asking the residents to take any special precautions other than, you know, it's not a bad idea to have a gallon of drinking water in the house for a lot of reasons. But I'm not suggesting anything beyond that. We have a good system, and now we have some redundancy. And I just thank council so much for funding that.
One more question, please, regarding the, I don't know, northeast, or rather southeast 53rd Street, the road that goes up to the wastewater treatment plant? That project is in progress?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, is Lila?
Nope.
Okay. I'll have her give you an update on that.
Thank you.
Give council an update.
And that's it?
Thank you.
All right. Great. All right. Now would be when we move into the public hearing process, where this is a continuation item from August 8th meeting, 2011, to receive written and oral testimony concerning the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, ZOA 2011-04, geological hazards.
You have a request to continue this again to September 26th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. I read right over that.
So we need a motion of the council to continue it.
So motion to continue to September 26th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to continue this item until September 26th, 2011. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? All right. Then have ordinances. Ordinance number 2011-11, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter 17.34, Nell Scott Plan District, Section 17.34.005, by deleting the definition of height from definitions, and amending ordinance number 84-02 as amended. Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2011-11.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2011-11, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter 17.34, Nell Scott Plan District, Section 17.34.005, by deleting the definition of height from definitions, and amending ordinance number 84-02 as amended. Roll call, please.
Norikis?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Ellinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have ordinance number 2011-12, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City improving organization and clarity in Lincoln City Municipal Code by amending Municipal Code, Chapter 17.74, commercial design standards, and amending ordinance 84-02 as amended. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second for ordinance number 2011-12, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City improving organization and clarity in Lincoln City Municipal Code by amending Municipal Code, Chapter 17.74, commercial design standards, and amending ordinance 84-02 as amended. Roll call, please.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Ellinson?
Yes.
Norikis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have ordinance number 2011-13, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map affecting 31 publicly owned properties and one privately owned property, and amending ordinances number 84-01 as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt 2011-13 ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second, ordinance number 2011-13, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map affecting 31 publicly owned properties and one privately owned property, and amending ordinance number 84-01 as amended. Roll call, please.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Ellinson?
Yes.
Norikas?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. This would be time now for additional comments from the public. Please come forward.
Michael Shoup, 1249 Northwest 15th Street Project. The reason I am doing this two times in one night is because I'm going to be talking more and more about all the projects that we have, okay? On 15th, I've been patient by what I've been told by Urban and Oil Agency, that they were going to do the project from February, March, April, May, June. And then they get into it, and it's February, March, April, May, June, July. Then it's February, March, April, May, June, July, August. Now it's February, March, April, May, June, July, August, September. And the archway was supposed to be put up, the project's supposed to be done, who's dragging their feet, and why ain't they marking up that street so that it's more recognizable for people to know what they're going to do on there? People to know where they're going to park, people don't know where they're going to drive, we're having trouble coming off the main highway. I'm afraid pretty soon, we're going to have an accident as you're coming off 101, coming into 15th Street, because they got people parking off to the side, and I'm afraid they're going to come around that bend. When somebody's coming around on the other side, they're going to come to a screeching halt, and there's going to be a rear end job there, because there's no direction. They need to mark their curbs, they need to put lines in the middle of the street, they need to be doing a lot, and I'm not seeing nothing. That their archway ain't put up yet, why isn't it put up? I hear it's done, why isn't it put in? There's winters coming, they haven't even got that big block they got there, what's supposed to be direction for their parking lot? Nothing's on it yet. What's the holdup? I just think that we're dragging our feet too much. Winter's going to get here, and we're going to not be ready for spring. That's all I got to say. Oh, well, one other thing. Over on Harbor, city owns a lot, on the lot, the corner of Harbor, across from the Rampside Motel. There is no direction in what people park, that's a city-owned area. There is no garbage containers, it's not being controlled. The Rampside Motel, it's so bad that the person that manages it, he's always getting people knocking at the door all the time, asking direction of where they can park there or not. If the city is going to take that over, and when they put the asphalt down, they fix it up, why can't we give them direction so we don't bother other people? So we need to put the lines where it's going to fit the direction in which they can pull in, so it ain't a mass confusion there. All right? That's it, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else? This would be the time. Mr. Scruton, please come forward.
Gene Scruton, 3264 Northwest Jetty, owner A1 Beach Rentals, and a property owner of Rhodes End. And I was just wondering, I saw this survey come out, and I've heard the things where you're not supposed to send it in, and you are. I always wondered, and it could pertain to anything in general, the city have obligation to voters, citizens, property owners, taxpayers? Who is, one, have more obligation, the city, to them? Because the way that was written there, and I think that's where a lot of people get kind of mad down there that own houses and stuff, you might not be a full-time resident or a voting person, but you're still a taxpayer. And I think there's certain obligation, I believe, for any government agency has an obligation to the taxpayer, I guess, I don't know, maybe you could correct me on that. One thing I was going to say about the Rhodes End deal, I know a lot of residents down there, and I know a lot of vacation rental owners and people in general, but the hatred for Lincoln City is just unreal. I don't know if it's warranted or not, I'm not that connected with it. I heard David Hawker's name come up a lot with the residents. You know, the vacation rental companies have a lot of, I'm not going to say hatred, but problems. Vacation rental people have a lot of problem with it. It just seems that almost like they need to hire a PR person, because there's just so much hatred towards Lincoln City. It's either I got my arm twisted to sign something, or I've been called a freeloader, or, you know, it's just really a bad PR deal. I've heard stories about Mary Anderson doing backdoor deals with local residents. I don't know if it's true or not, but I hear these rumors, the vacation rental, and I don't know if any of it's true, but I'm just saying, they need to hire a PR firm or something, because everybody down there just hates Lincoln City, it's the weirdest thing. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, Gene. Other questions, or other comments from citizens at large? All right, hearing none. We can go to council, then, comments. Gary, anything?
Thank you. I'm just glad to be here.
Mr. Norikas?
I understand it was a very successful triathlon event this weekend?
Attended.
The mayor attended. I understand it was 150 participants, which strikes me as a very successful event, and I'd like to thank Gail Kimberling and her crew that pulled it off. Well done.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sprague, what have you?
Just one thing. Just reminding the Ward 1 residents that there's an election going on for the filling of that seat down there. Two people running, and I would encourage the Ward 1 voters to get out and vote.
Thank you. Welcome back, counselor. Pull your mic down, would you?
I'd like to say that I agree with Mr. Shoup, who came up here. There is a big problem on 15th Street. I mean, just like there are evacuation arrows, and people, some people think that means it's a one-way street. Because there are no lines going down the center, none of the curbs are marked, and it is a mess in the parking lot across from the...
Rampside.
Right, the ramp side. People don't know which direction to park in there, and that really should be taken care of.
Okay.
And I'd like to say something, that is on the blueprint, so if it's on the blueprint, the contractor should follow it.
Thank you. Counselor?
Mr. Sprague stole my show. Ward 1, let's get your ballots in.
You don't want to be alone up here, representing Ward 1 anymore?
Yeah, somebody else from the board.
Thank you. Actually, that was on my list, as well as reminding council, we have a joint meeting September 21st with the county commissioners here in this location. It's a Wednesday night, 6:00 p.m. So I'd like to have you here.
And we will televise that, Mayor.
Great, that's good. And if you have some agenda items or things, you might get them to Kathy, so that we can kind of put something forth. Also, I want the council to know, before school started, I actually attended a meeting in Newport with the school district. All the teachers were in a joint meeting, and I attended that session with them, and they were so nice as to introduce me. I was the only elected individual there from any of the cities in the county, so it was all the county teachers. And a nice bunch of people, they were getting some orientations and some education, so it was a nice opportunity to carry Lincoln City's flag. With that...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I'd just like people to know how much time you put in to going to events. I know there was one Saturday, a few Saturdays ago, you were at three different events, you know, on that Saturday, and I, for one, as a citizen, I appreciate it, you know, all the time you put in, aside from the work that we have here at the council.
Well, thank you, Gary. I quite frankly enjoy it, and I'm hoping that the citizens take the opportunity to visit with me as I'm out and about. That's what I'm trying to hear, the noise from the citizens, so.
I just wanted to say also, I forgot to mention this, that I really appreciated the ribbon-cutting session that we attended up at the Samaritan Early Learning Center. And that's a wonderful facility, and it's a great asset to Lincoln City.
It really is. It's a great partnership, so nicely done.
Hawker gets some credit for that. You know, the council was unanimous in their support of that. I just want to make sure that that message gets out there, and it didn't take the council much debate to determine that that was needed, and that we would make that, that the city would make that contribution towards that. Council was all on board.
It is a great facility, too. If you have, I don't know now that the citizens will have a chance to tour it, because I think it goes into lockdown as they finish.
Maybe they can, and I did talk to some of the staff there about another event for that, and maybe they could combine that with a little fundraiser or something, and I'll follow through on that.
With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.